Good afternoon. It is four o'clock and I'd like to welcome everyone to our November work session. It is November 8th at 4:00 PM. It is also Election Day, so we have a lot of great things going on today. Is there, there's an agenda in front of us and I know there is a recommended change to the agenda. It is 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to come out of Executive Session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Ms. Morrissey, all in favor. Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve Personnel A, 1 through 5, B, 1 through 24, and C, 1 through 35?
So moved.
So moved by--
Did you say 35?
1 through 35, correct.
Just making sure.
So moved by Ms. Morrissey?
Second.
Second by Ms. Light, all in favor. Motion passes. We'd like to welcome everyone to our December Board Meeting, regular Board Meeting, on Tuesday, the 13th. If we would, please stand for the pleasure allegiance. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. All right. The next item on our agenda is recognitions and we're going to start with the PBIS, state recognition, with Ms. Tara Davis.
Every year, the Georgia Department of Education recognizes schools across the state for outstanding implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports. I want to thank Dr. Bearden and the board for allowing the Office of School Safety and Discipline to recognize eight of our Forsyth County schools for achieving either operational or distinguished levels. In Forsyth County, we currently have 24 schools implementing PBIS. Two schools are onboarding this year and next year we have approximately six more schools that will be joining us. It's important to note that these schools choose to implement PBIS as a framework to create a safe, connected, and thriving school environment. For people unfamiliar with PBIS, I will briefly explain. PBIS is an implementation framework. It's not a curriculum or a program. PBIS maximizes the selection and the use of evidence-based prevention and intervention practices along a multi-tiered continuum that supports academic, behavior, and social supports for all of our students. These practices are developed through the use and analysis of qualitative and quantitative data and typically takes a school two to five years to fully implement. PBIS has over 30 years of evidence-based research to support the positive impact that practices have on school climate. Schools in Georgia started implementing PBIS in 2007. Currently, there are approximately 1,400 schools implementing in Georgia and over 25,000 across the nation. So before we recognize the schools, I want to acknowledge the unwavering support and leadership of our school administrators and the members of their PBIS teams that are here tonight. These leaders and their school teams are the shapers of their school culture and climate, the workers for change, and the believers that all students can succeed. The goal of PBIS is not to create perfect children. The goal is to create an environment that is safe, connected, and thriving, so all of our students can grow and achieve. So, from the Office of School Safety and Discipline, we thank you. So for our operational schools, there's a set of criteria that the Georgia Department of Education recognizes. Most of the criteria is driven through the use of data. These are just some of the components I wanted to highlight from these schools. All of the schools scored at least, let's see, 83 to 86% on their fidelity tool, which is called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. Also, these schools, based on their data and their school population, they have to meet the criteria that 80 to 100% of their students must receive less than or equal to one referral. Our operational schools have 97 to 100% of our students receiving zero or one referral in a school year. That is outstanding work. The DOE also uses a percent change model to determine if there has been a longitudinal change over the last three years, looking at office discipline referrals, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions, and all of our operational schools met that criteria. So to give you an understanding of how many operational schools there are in our state, there's about 431, 293 are elementary, and 71 are middle schools. So, I'd like to recognize the following schools for being operational schools. Coming Elementary, Principal Jordan Livermore. If you guys will come up. Here he is. Thank you. Matt Elementary School, Principal Jim Tribble. Riverwatch Middle School, Pam Bibic and her team. So to be a distinguished school in the state of Georgia, you have to implement with fidelity, which is above 70%, and our distinguished schools range from 83 to 100% implementation with fidelity. To be a distinguished school, you also have to have 90 to 100% of your students receiving zero or one referral. Our distinguished schools have 97 to 100% of their students that have either received, not received a referral, or have received a referral. And then, of course, looking at the percent change over time, these schools have exceeded expectations, and so they were honored with the acknowledgement of being a distinguished school. Just so that you know, in Forsyth County, we started implementing PBIS in 2017. This is the first time we've ever had distinguished schools. There are only 115 distinguished schools in the state. 89 are elementary, eight are middle school, and seven are high school. And just a special note to Forsyth Central High School, they are the only distinguished high school in the metro Atlanta area. So first, I'd like to acknowledge Chesta T. Elementary School, Dr. Polly Tennis and her team. You get your frame certificate and we made these banners for you. They're very large, so you can take those when you leave. Thank you. And next, we have Silver City Elementary School, Principal Mike Sloop and his team. And next, we have Forsyth Central High School, Dr. Josh Low and his team. Thank you, everyone, and that concludes our recognition for this year.
Give everybody a round of applause. Congratulations to each one of you, and one of the things that I noticed as they were presenting is that everybody was presented by a team, and it's a team effort, so thank you so much for all that. Any other comments? All right. The next item is our Georgia DECA Advertising Services Test with Ms. Leanne Rice.
Good evening. It's my privilege to get to recognize two incredible individuals this evening, and I'm going to start first with a student from South Forsyth High School, Palak Moore. Would you come join me, Palak? Palak won first place in the Georgia DECA Advertising Services Test, and she is currently a sophomore at South Forsyth High School. Would you tell us a little bit about what this test was?
Hi, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. Recently in October, I had to take a 100 multiple-choice question test where I had to demonstrate and apply the concepts of advertising to complete this test. I'm proud to say that I've won first place for this and I'm honored to represent South Forsyth High School and, on the large, Forsyth County. Thank you for having me.
And if you are here representing Palak, would you please stand and be recognized, family We are also honored to celebrate our Employee of the Month, and so if Mr. Marco Ramirez would come join me from Shiloh Point Elementary School. Mr. Ramirez is the head custodian at Shiloh Point Elementary School, and each month, we recognize employees who go above and beyond and demonstrate exceptional service. Employees win this honor through nominations, and so I'd like to share a few with you of people from Shiloh Point, these amazing things they had to say, Marco, incredible. Marco shows integrity in everything he does in our building. He goes above and beyond his duties to support all students and staff. Our building is the cleanest and safest building in the county. When asked to help, Marco immediately jumps in and he makes sure you have what you need. He follows up and makes sure every job is well done. He conducts himself professionally in every situation. He is quite simply the best. Marco does an amazing job organizing all the custodial duties who work with him. The reason I'm nominating him is the relationships that he makes with our Spanish-speaking students. He personally greets them and checks on how they're doing each morning. They absolutely adore him, and they love the fact that he takes time out of all the jobs he has to spend time with them. He also helps teachers when they have a student in need. There's a couple more really good ones. There's a whole lot here. Marco is an educator in every sense of the word. He is teaching our students the value of a positive attitude and hard work with his shining example. He shows up to work every day and sometimes works very long days with a smile and a kind word for everyone. He goes above and beyond to do the best job. I am thankful our students get to see such a great example of what it means to be a hard worker and a good person every day. And finally, the past few years have been difficult. At times, COVID has increased the amount of work that we all do in different ways. The custodial staff has had so many new protocols and extra work that comes with them, and it's hard not to feel affected by it at times. But Marco hasn't just kept a smile on his face. I think he has grown as a leader. I see him with the other custodians explaining what to do and the systems that he has in place. We are incredibly lucky to have a person willing to work so hard and always exhibit positivity. I wish I could attach a photo of Marco dancing with my class. We found out that it was his birthday, and so the kids ushered him into our room to dance to the "Go Noodle" birthday song. Now, if that doesn't deserve recognition, I don't know what does. Marco, thank you so very much for your service. We would also like to thank Jim and Nix, as usual, for sponsoring our Employee of the Month, and if you are here as a family member or a staff member at Shiloh Point, would you please stand up and let us recognize you? Yes, family! And Dr. Bearden, I believe you have our next recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Well, after 12 years of service to our Board of Education, Kristin Morrissey has decided to retire. Her last day is the end of December. I just want to take this opportunity, Kristin, to thank you for your years of service. I've been a superintendent for 18 years, and I've worked with a lot of different board members over that time. You are always super-prepared, very organized, but most importantly to me, you have always been a champion for all students, and I greatly appreciate your service to our community. I think everybody in our community deserves to give you a round of applause. Thank you, Kristin.
I brought my bicep tissues, but I haven't needed it yet, so. It's there. Well, thank you, Dr. Bearden. I've been very blessed. I decided to run for the school board many years ago. I moved to Forsyth County 20 years ago, like many other people, for the great schools, and I got involved with the PTA and Dr. Evans, and I felt like, you know, I was part of the problem of the growth, so I thought I should be part of the solution to help keep the schools as great, as good as they were, and make sure they're going in the same projectile. So, you know, got involved in Mike Dungeon, my predecessor, I saw him somewhere earlier. Had big shoes to fill, so I really appreciate his mentorship along the years, and he's been along the whole ride, and I really appreciate him being there to help me along the way. So, thank you for your leadership and guidance along the way. But, boy, I got involved and people, the reason I got involved, people ask questions and they're, "Why don't they do this?", or "Why do they have early release days?", or "Why is the calendar like this?", or "Why do they have graduations in Gwinnett?". Boy, those questions you get, and I was like, "Well, why don't we ask?". So that was part of the reasons why I did it, and I found out when you ask, you can get answers. And it was just that simple. And I found at the central office, there's a lot of people that have experts in their field, and they were here to answer the questions, just like there's teachers in the field that are experts because they want to be, and they're passionate. And that's what I learned as a board member, is there's so many people in here or there because they want to be. And that was the best part about being on the board, is people think as soon as you're on the Board of Ed that you know everything. Oh, you don't. Oh, you don't. Most of what I knew was except being a parent and being involved in the school system, which is the best preparation, but then the best thing I learned about being a board member is learning who to ask, and when to ask, and how to ask, and then listening and learning, going to the schools, being involved, going to school council meetings, and just listening and learning. That's the best thing I could do as a board member, and being there to support. And so I learned that. It was a long ride for learning. There's so many great principals, Laura Wilson, Gary Davison, amazing people, the staff, Tim Amerson, I mean, before I was on the board, so some great people along the way, board members. I'll miss you. Dr. Bearden? Thank you. We've had some hard times, some good times, but thank you.
Well, that concludes our recognitions for December. At this time, we will take a short recess for those that would like to leave at this time.
I made fun of David, and he sent me a picture of the scoreboard.
All right. We will continue our meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Has everybody had the opportunity to review it, and are there any questions? No questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Ms. Light, all in favor? Motion passes. The next item is a presentation and discussion items with our finance report, Mr. Larry
So tonight, we'll be discussing the November 2022 financial statements. As always, we keep Goal 3 in mind when we talk about the financial statements. So we started the month off, beginning in November, with about $82.5 million, and this was a big month. Typically, we see in the past either October, or November, or December, a breakdown. This year, we didn't see as much money come October. November was a month this year that everything hit. Almost $250 million dropped into the bank this month, so that's why the cash equivalent is so large for this month in the year, excuse me, this month in the month. This time last year was about $207 million. On the year-to-date budget, we are at 65.5% collection rate. One thing I did want to point out is Avalorm is at 94.9. This time last year was only 87.84, so we're ahead of schedule. And another comparison I want to give you is overall, we're at 65.5 collection. So this time last year, it was only 61.49, but going back to '29, it was 65.15. So last year was a little bit of a dip because it came in a little bit later that year too as well. Expenditures. Year-to-date, we spent $234,000, $234 million of a $585 million budget. We're at 40.52% payout. This time last year, we're at 41.15, and '21, we're at 41.53. So we're actually spending a lot less than we did almost the last two years. Debt service cash analysis. The debt service account's at $67 million. We were at 62 last year. Currently, SPOSS is down to 44, we're at 70. We've got the warehouse project going on, Lakeside Middle School is approved, so you'll see this account drop down dramatically over the next year and a half. We have some money in the SPOSS 5 Money Market Fund, we'll be closing that out. The SPOSS 6 is new, and that's 33 million, and if you look here, we spent our first money out of SPOSS 6 of $127,000. I just thought I'd point that out.
Does that go into Midway?
Probably so. With the special revenue funds, currently, we have a budget, revised budget of $16 million. What's happened is now that we've gotten some of our federal programs approved from the state and federal level, we've increased that budget for that. We spent about 7.7, the majority of that would probably be school nutrition as well as Title I funds, and we have a available budget of about 8.6. Capital projects, currently, we have about 20, almost $28 million in there. This time last year, we're at 36. We're spinning that cash balance down like I talked about. And one thing I do want to point out, school nutrition is still producing enough revenue for the fund balance to rise a little bit. It's 18.3. This time last year was at 6.6. So we do have a spin-down plan over the next five years to spend that money down, based on the guidance we got from USDA and the state of Georgia. The investment summary. So, one thing I want to point out is if you look at Fund 306, the 2018-20 bonds is down to the last $595. We're moving that to the cash account. Today, we reached out to LGIP Fund, so we can convert that particular LGIP Fund and rename it for the debt service fund. We're going to start putting our debt service fund money into the LGIP Fund because the interest rates are almost at 3.6, so we can start drawing more interest down than we normally do, and that's also a relationship because we did drop our mill-by-mill this year. So we're just trying to make sure we're capitalizing on everything we can and bringing extra funds in for debt service. The Fund 100 Fund, that's the same as last year. You see the Fund 100, we put $190 million this month into that fund. Currently, under the way that the interest rates are, 3.5, that's almost $300,000 a month interest alone in that account, just FYI. And we didn't even earn like $100,000 the year before in interest. We had about $114,000 that last year. Like I said, we're going to pull the 595 out, repurpose Fund 306. 357 is down to 1.7, it was at 4. We're getting very close to the end of the SPOSS 4 money. SPOSS 5, we're down to 44 million, we're at 70. We're spending that money over the next year and a half, two years. 354 is part of SPOSS 5, we'll be pulling that money out of there soon enough, and of course, 352 is new, it's $33 million, and we didn't have any cash in the fund last year. One thing I do want to point out with the collection, there's nothing to go back to the previous year because that was all SPOSS 4, this is SPOSS 5. As you can see, we're already up to $34.5 million. We've collected the amount of money we need for Midway, so we're good on that. Everything going forward will be for the other projects. One thing I do want to point out, as you know, the change month-to-month is not very great, there's some small variations in there. What I do want to point out is compared to SPOSS, and don't forget, SPOSS 5 for us was record numbers towards the end of the period, we're surpassing the SPOSS 5 numbers from a year ago. And this numbers, if you take the average of those six months we're looking at, it's averaging about 8.83% per month on average. So we're right at where inflation was, or where inflation has been the last several months. The elementary schools, the cash balance is 4.7 in this month, last year it was 44. The activity is normal. The middle schools, we're at 2.3, we're at $2 million last year, activity's normal for that. High schools, we're at 6, last year they're 6, this year, normal. This year, normal. And last but not least, we've got $13.2 million in the school accounts. We had about $12.5 last year. And the activity, any balance percentage of everything is about where it was last year as well. And that's November 2022 financials. Any questions?
Any questions? Comment? Thank you very much. The next item is future funding for Forsyth County Schools with Dr. Jeff Bearden.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'll be real brief. The school board and I met with our legislative delegation this past Friday to review priorities for the upcoming session. And we have several of our representatives in the audience tonight. I just want to point them out and thank them for being here. First of all, Representative-elect Carter Barrett's here tonight. Carter, if you could wave at everybody. Representative-elect Brent Cox is in the back. Senator Greg Dolezal is joining us tonight. And school board member-elect Mike Valdez is here this evening as well. And Mike joined us at that discussion on Friday. I also have a newly formed Citizens Finance Committee. We have met twice as well. I don't see any of those members here this evening, but there were several of them that were here last month. As a result of the meeting on Friday, we all agreed that we want to protect the quality of schools in Forsyth County while maintaining financial responsibility, being great stewards of our resources. So tonight, I just wanted to announce publicly that I'm going to be asking a couple of members of our legislative delegation, a couple of members of the Citizens Finance Committee, a couple of board members, to work with my staff and I moving forward on the direction of funding for Forsyth County schools. I don't know what the final solution will be, but certainly Friday, I believe we had a very healthy dialogue about where we need to go. We want to make sure we're very inclusive and very transparent to our community moving forward. So I will report out periodically as this group meets to see if we have any resolutions moving forward. But I just want to thank, again, the members of our delegation, the members of the Citizen Finance Committee for working with myself and the board moving forward. I think it's a very important step for the future of our school system. And to the members of our delegation, thank you for your service to our community. We wish you the best of luck as this session starts in January. And as I said on Friday, if you need any information from Forsyth County Schools, please reach out to us, and we will provide that. So again, that's all I wanted to announce tonight. If you have any questions or comments.
Any questions?
So if you were at that meeting as well, yes.
Any questions? Comments?
No, I just wanted to echo. I think that it was a very positive meeting on Friday. I know that we've had the discussions, you know, with the rise in housing prices and then, you know, the burden of our taxpayers. So I know that that was in the forefront of everyone's minds this past year. So we've had good discussion around that. I like the planning. I like the committees that have been, or we're bringing together. I think the Financial Advisory Committee is great. It provides, you know, an extra checks and balances on what we're doing. And then I just look forward to, you know, in my opinion, everything should be on the table when we discuss it. And then when you get down to the details, you know, we can take things out, just based on conversations that we're having with the delegation, with Forsyth County Schools. And then also, I'm interested in hearing, you know, what the community thinks as well. So, you know, the community is part of these discussions as well. So if there's any feedback that you have, you know, feel free to contact one of us. Let us know your interests or what you believe should be, you know, part of this plan going forward. And yeah, I'm very optimistic, and I think that we're gonna, we're gonna come to some good conclusions, so.
I neglected to say, I believe Mike Dudgeon, I believe Mike's going to be joining our committee next year as well. So thank you, Mike, for agreeing to do that. Mike is a former board member, also a former member of the legislative delegation, bringing a wealth of knowledge to that committee as well.
And January's a good time to start. Everybody's going to be working together, and so January is a great time. Thank you. All right. Before we go into public participation, we're just going to do a short recess if anybody would like to leave. Our next part of the agenda is public participation. Tonight, each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. We have a light indicator box on the podium right here. When you start, your timer will start. You have three minutes. It will be green. At the 30-second mark, the yellow light will come on. And then, when you have 10 seconds left, the yellow light will flash. And then, when your three minutes are up, the red light will come on, and we will stop. Like I said, everybody tonight has three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Mr. Jerk Kerschel.
Thank you. My name is Jerk Kerschel. Tonight, I'd like to share the story of Chloe Cole. Chloe began identifying as transgender at age 12. Although alarmed, her family, friends, school, and medical care providers all supported her gender identification and worked to affirm her as a boy as quickly as possible. At age 13, Chloe was put on puberty blockers. At age 15, Chloe had her healthy breasts removed. At age 16, Chloe realized it was all a mistake, a mistake with now irreversible consequences. Before the affirmation care Chloe got, she had a perfectly healthy body. Her mental perception was that she required hormonal and surgical intervention to fix her gender dysphoria. But as we all know, our mental perceptions change over time, especially as we pass through the turbulence of adolescence. Sadly, in the case of Chloe, she now faces infertility. Or even if she is able to have a child, she'll be unable to breastfeed because of the radical mastectomy that she underwent. And one might blame Chloe's parents for allowing this damage to be done to their daughter. But they were caught in a terrible emotional blackmail. Would you rather have a dead daughter or a living son? Given that kind of threat, it's easy to understand how loving parents can be convinced to put their children through all kinds of risky and dangerous medical interventions. Now, let me be clear. People with gender dysphoria deserve our compassion, respect, and most importantly, mental health support. They are real people with real pain, and as children of God, deserve our love. But in the name of endless compassion, we are doing severe irreversible physical damage to children when we affirm the delusions of those who are suffering from mental health issues. The vast majority of children who experience gender dysphoria end up growing up as healthy, intact gays and lesbians. A policy of affirmation only puts these homosexual children in grave danger of great harm. Whenever school staff discover students who identify with gender dysphoria, parents should be informed, and those students should be immediately referred to mental health professionals who can help them overcome the dysphoria without doing permanent physical harm to themselves. They should be protected from bullying, both in and out of school, but they also desperately need responsible adults to help them overcome their mental health issues through reliable therapy rather than through violent hormonal and surgical procedures. I humbly ask the board to consider making it district policy to prioritize getting our youth with gender dysphoria the mental health treatment they need so that they don't ever suffer the same irreversible damage that Chloe Cole has suffered. Partnering with LGBTQ clubs and organizations in our schools may be especially helpful so that gay and lesbian children who experience temporary gender dysphoria are helped to grow up whole and healthy. I know that this is a sensitive topic, and people who support affirmation-only for gender dysphoria will feel very defensive about alternatives to hormones and surgery. But we cannot change boys to girls or girls to boys, and pretending that we can makes everything worse. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Allison Hare.
Please let me know when my time starts because...
So see the timer right there? And we'll start it. Were you in here when I did the rules?
Yes, sir.
You heard the rules? All right. So when the buzzer hits red?
Yes, sir.
Three minutes.
All right. It has been 10 months since you all allowed me to be here as a parent. I have been silenced. You have silenced me and many other parents. And for that, in my opinion, you should be ashamed. There has been a federal court ruling, and I'm going to read from the end of that, that says, "The court therefore enjoins defendant's enforcement of the following provisions: Respectfulness requirement, restriction on personally addressing board members' request to keep remarks civil, blah, blah, blah. In addition, the court enjoins the board's permanent ban of Ms. Hare from future meetings." I'm so sorry for our community that it took this and it took the taxpayers' money to allow me to be back to tell you what all I was trying to tell you before, which is what you're doing by sexualizing our children is not right. It's not right. And I am now a taxpaying citizen, and I reserve the right to speak at these meetings. I hope that this case restores the freedom of speech that you took away from me and that you took away from so many others. I also hope that this case encourages all parents to stand up and speak up for their rights. For the remainder of my time, I will go back to where, Mr. McCall, you cut me off back in March. She lifts her arms, and I throw her shirt to the floor. We push back together, feeling the warmth and silk of each other's skin, our breaths coming faster and harder. Mary Carlson's mouth circles the soft skin of my breasts, and I cry, arching up to her. She pushes up against me with equal force. I flip over again, straddling her, kiss my way down her breastband, taking each nipple lightly beneath my teeth, scraping ever so softly until she's moaning and buckling against me. She reaches for the button of my pants. Do I need to go on? I don't need to go on. I was here for a reason, and I was here to protect my child. And you all did not do that, and I made a choice. But I will tell you, I will not go away, and my rights will not be infringed upon, nor will the rights of the rest of this county, as long as I have anything to say about it.
Our next speaker is Ms. Kathleen Krainic.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Krainic. I'm a Forsyth County resident and a proud parent of two Forsyth County Schools graduates. My comments tonight cover a few points. The first is the preliminary ruling in the Mama Bears lawsuit against Forsyth County Schools. I notice in their media interviews, the plaintiffs tend to skip right over the judge's conclusion in the preliminary order, which reads, quote, "Motion for preliminary injunction is granted in part and denied in part." It is not the unequivocal victory they're claiming, nor is it a final ruling. Context is important, and yet, as with books, they choose to ignore it. I'll also call attention to some irony. First, I'm struck by one of the plaintiff's invocations of her First Amendment rights while simultaneously demanding that our public schools promote, quote, "biblical relationships." One wonders if they hear themselves. And of course, if we're relying on court decisions, let's look to the U.S. Supreme Court ruling that the Constitution protects the right to receive information and ideas, and that the removal of books from shelves of a school library implicates students' First Amendment rights. One of the plaintiffs says that when the First Amendment, when First Amendment rights are taken away, we have nothing left. The U.S. Supreme Court agrees and sides with students. I'm further struck by the plaintiff's use of the name Mama Bears to define their group. Mama Bears as an entity is actually a nationwide organization established to support, educate, and empower families with LGBTQ members and the LGBTQ community as a whole. The irony is rich indeed. On a positive note, one outcome of the lawsuit is that meeting attendees can address board members individually. And so I'd like to take the opportunity of our final board meeting to express my gratitude for Kristin Morrissey's service to Forsyth County Schools and our community. Kristin, you've been an advocate for students, parents, and educators. You are a consensus builder, a listener, and a problem solver. You cast a broad net when seeking feedback and gathering opinions and jump in to help resolve the narrowest details, like when my family needed help navigating the dual enrollment program or managing an inclement weather SAT cancellation. I appreciate your leadership and service over these past 12 years, and our schools and students are better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Pat Wall.
Good evening. These words were inspired by an essay by news journalist Dan Rather. One of the great sadnesses of today is how politics and fringe groups have polluted so much of our public conversation and spread into areas at once seemed free of partisanship. Perhaps nowhere is this more true than in the battlegrounds that our schools have become. We are living in an age when the number of books being banned is on the rise, and the willingness to confront America's complicated history is on the decline. We see intolerance worn as a badge of toughness, while inclusion, the great promise of what public education can be, is treated at a weakness. We see a concerted effort to take over school boards with believers in the culture wars eager to inflict their small-mindedness bias and mean-spirited ideology on shaping how young minds are taught. Sadly, there are many examples of radical right ideology shaping curricula on issues ranging from race and racism, science, history, religion, and LGBTQ rights. Some misguided groups have learned that they can rally their base through misrepresentations of school culture, which they depict as out of control with so-called woke ideology, and the boogeyman of critical race theory, which they totally mischaracterize and which is taught in none of the schools where they have made it an issue. Even some speakers in this room have played to fears that they have carefully fanned to lure in other small-minded individuals. Some have cultivated their reputation by attacking professional educators and attacking the very idea that schools should be welcoming, tolerant, and diverse learning environments. Teachers are going the extra mile, reaching out to kids in need, tweaking lesson plans so that every student can learn. The work is not easy, and it can be an incredible grind. Teachers, counselors, media specialists, and school administrators, you are our inspiration and hope. You nurture the flames of our democracy, and you literally save lives. You work miracles every day. Your resourcefulness, resilience, and creativity are boundless, and we saw it during the heart of the pandemic, and we see it now. It is all the more reason you should not be taken for granted. How many of you can close your eyes and be transported to a classroom from your past? Do you see a favorite teacher? Hear that word of encouragement or hard truth that shaped the course of your life? Teachers are the winds that propel our children's sails forward, and they are the North Stars that help guide us all. We cannot thank our teachers enough. Each day, the gifts they have given are renewed. We should do everything we can to protect and value them, not harass or diminish them. We owe them our encouragement and support, and so to all of our educators, from Dan Rather and me, we thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Cindy Martin.
It's been 10 months since parents have been silenced by this board. I am finally able to speak freely tonight because of a federal lawsuit against your unconstitutional public participation policies. You are government officials, and you cannot silence those you serve. I am here to expose the sexually explicit books in our school libraries, and I will not stand down. I will not allow innocent children to be harmed by the highly sexualized content that has infiltrated our libraries. It is irresponsible and immoral to provide this content to minors. I want to make one important point before I read a book passage. Back in February, when this board illegally silenced parents from reading these books, you said it was to protect children. As you recall, the room erupted in laughter at the irony. Now, 10 months have passed, with plenty of time for you to make good on those words and protect children by removing these books, yet all of them still remain in our libraries. Your lack of action forces me to read book passages tonight. Superintendent Bearden, I hold you fully responsible. What is your answer to this sexualized content? Quote, "If you're concerned about a book, then don't let your child read it," end of quote. Sir, the point is sexually explicit books do not belong in our libraries, in our school libraries, period. I have emailed book excerpts to all of you for a year, and I get no response. I am here to make you uncomfortable so that you are compelled to do the right thing, and I will come back every month to read to you until you remove all of these books. and I will come back every month to read to you until you remove all of these books. This book is at Alliance and Denmark. He emerged from the room, slinging off his shirt. "Come here," he said. I pushed back the blankets, revealing my already naked body. His tongue swept my mouth in time to the finger that slipped inside of me. My hips undulated, demanding more, craving the fullness of him. And as he added another finger, he stretched above me, his head lowering to my breast, and all it took was one press of his teeth against my nipple before I was clawing at his back. "Please," I cried. He gripped my thighs to spread my legs wide, snarling in satisfaction at the wetness he found waiting for him. A moan was my only reply as he slid in another finger, filling me, plunging his fingers deeper and harder. His eyes held mine as he brought those fingers to his mouth and sucked on them on the taste of me.
Thank you.
Remove the books. I'll be back next month.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Dungeon.
Good evening. Good to see everybody today. Before I get started, I want to say that I'm going to rip off the idea of having the kids and presentations up front. I'm on the state charter school commission. I'm like, that's such a good idea. So I'm going to try to bring that to our meeting because it gives sort of a good perspective on why we're all here today. I wanted to give a quick story and then get to what I really want to do. 16 years ago, there was an outsider who kind of got elected to the school board, and my good friend from District 3 was there. He saw the whole thing, and it was a lot of mistrust at that time. There was a lot of noise in the air about the school board and what was going on, and a lot of controversial issues. And to be fair, they weren't nearly as controversial as what's going on today. But what happened was, is after a time of adjustment, everything worked out. I think I did a good four-year service. I think I did a good years of service in the legislature with a variety of people. And one lesson I wanted to lift up to everyone here, actually, that I learned in my long political service, is make sure not to look at other people and assume what their motive is. Most people, almost everyone involved in education, no matter what their opinion, really does want the best thing for kids, but it's really easy to look at somebody and say, "I don't agree with you, so I think you have this motivation or that motivation." I really found that down in Georgia Dome easier to deal with all the controversy by thinking, "You know what? I'm going to give some grace to those people." Anyway, I just want to remind you that 16 years ago, a crazy guy came out of nowhere. It all worked out. But my real reason to being here is to really thank you guys for your service. I know how hard it was 16 years ago to be on this board. I can't even imagine how hard it is today to deal with the issues of the day, going through COVID, all the things that we've had to do, and I just really appreciate it. I appreciate my service with my friends from District 4 and District 3. But I really wanted to say, you know, my friend from District 2 took my spot on this board. She has poured out her heart and soul, and I've watched it for 12 years, and really given so much to this community. Made me proud as a parent finishing raising my kids here and as a citizen of this county to have somebody that dedicated. And I know how hard this job is. I know you don't get paid a lot of money. You're always wrong. You're always making decisions that are going to make people mad. That's just part of this job, and you do it because you love the community. And I just really wanted to say, I appreciate you guys doing what you do. I know it's hard. Again, it's way harder than when I did it, and I can't even imagine. So anyway, from my heart, I wanted to say thank you, and I'm a positive person, and I want to say I think all the controversies of the day, it's very tough right now. A lot of people all kind of ginned up, but I have confidence because, you know what's going to work out? Because we still have the best school system in the state of Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to attempt this, the next name, and if I mess up, I really so apologize, but Akshita Thakkar? Pronounce it for me when you get to the podium, please.
Akshita Thakur.
Thakkar. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Akshita Thakur, and I'm a junior at Denmark High School. I'm an initiative leader in Georgia for the Ruth Project, an organization designed to support the implementation of Title IX guidelines and gender justice. I'm here today to advocate for the survivors of sexual harassment and assault in Forsyth County. The lack of education and conversation about sexual harassment has made many survivors feel uncomfortable in approaching school officials, especially since many students don't know what Title IX is to begin with. They deserve the right to feel safe at school, but without measures to educate the student body on how to prevent harassment or knowledge of who to contact if a situation occurs, student survivors are left without appropriate support from the school district. Nearly 500 people signed their petition in agreement and need better educational resources for Title IX and sexual harassment. The prevalence of sexual harassment is told to us through the stories of our peers and for demanding action. A student in this school district recalled, quote, "I've been raped three times in my life, two of which happened while I was a student at Forsyth Schools. And I felt I had no support, nor did I have any education to help me decide what to do. I wish I could have done something right away," unquote. There are too many stories like this testimony, making the need for detailed and accurate Title IX education for students and training for staff even more pressing. School staff should be trained on how to react if a student reports sexual harassment and should be non-accusatory, empathetic, and understanding. Confidentiality for the student's reporting should also be taken seriously, since, as I said earlier, this topic remains controversial and personal to the student. The reporting of sexual harassment should also... Currently, many students aren't aware of their rights under Title IX. Schools should inform students of their rights when they approach the school coordinator. Students need to be educated on who their Title IX coordinator is and where to find them, and to know who to contact if they have experienced sexual harassment or gender discrimination. All schools are required to have a Title IX coordinator. However, conflicts of interest may arise depending on the faculty assigned to the position. A mental health professional is preferred in this circumstance, so students can feel more comfortable in approaching their coordinator compared to an administrator. Sexual harassment remains a serious epidemic in our community. It can range from catcalling to a physical assault, and it is easier to find a woman who has been sexually harassed than a woman who hasn't. And it is imperative that we work together to ensure that this changes. By improving Title IX education and accessibility, Forsyth County has the opportunity to transform the experiences of students in genuine need of Title IX support, allowing countless of students to feel more protected in their schools. So we ask Forsyth County to help us make our schools a more supportive environment for survivors of sexual harassment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Kudziewski.
Good evening. Recently, there was an article in the local paper about the Board of Education was going to save taxpayers' money by not raising the milice charge. This is very minute gesture that only scratches the surface of what the board can do to save taxpayers' money. When I first spoke to this board, I quoted the Heritage Foundation and parental rights, which this board chose to disregard. This board made poor decisions which cost taxpayers huge attorney fees in federal court while trying to defend your right to deny parents' First Amendment rights of free speech. This was a very poor decision which cost taxpayers large sums of money in attorney's fees. Another poor decision is allowing boys and girls' restrooms in our schools. Sooner or later, there will be a boy who will inappropriately touch a girl in a restroom. This will end up in a lawsuit because you are not protecting girls. No, the girls do not want to hear that they are just being overly sensitive. According to students, teachers are asking students about their pronouns and genders, and if their parents are aware and approve, and if they would like to keep it from their parents. Teachers do not ask these type of questions unless they are directed to do so. This behavior is not only unprofessional, it is beyond wrong. This behavior will end up in a future lawsuit. Sexualizing children harms them mentally, emotionally, with lasting effects into adulthood. The behavior of this school system with sexualizing children will end up with a future lawsuit. You have hired extra counselors to evaluate student surveys in order to evaluate their mental health. These counselors are not experienced licensed psychologists who would properly evaluate a child. If a child is evaluated improperly and the school causes harm, this will result in a lawsuit. Many of these decisions this board has made puts the school system in jeopardy of being sued. I suggest you start working with parents, guardian, grandparents, so you will not be running into these issues with lawsuits in the future. This will save taxpayers a ton of money and also start gaining the trust of parents. Right now, you have lost the trust of parents and taxpayers. Just so you know, my daughter went to Ball State University for teaching. She couldn't wait to yank my grandson out of the school system, which she did. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Katie Walter. No, Ms. Walter. Cynthia, Ms. Missman? Ms. Miskman? Cynthia, Ms. Miskin? Carrie McLaughlin?
Good evening. My name is Carrie McLaughlin. I'm a mother of two children in Forsyth County Schools who love to read. But unfortunately, I no longer encourage my children to use the school libraries because they're full of sexually explicit content. The media appeals process is not working. The media committee in my son's middle school voted to keep both books that I challenged for their sexually explicit content, including graphic descriptions of sexual activity and sexual assault of a child. This is what they consider to be appropriate for an 11- to 13-year-old to read on their own. Quote, "Your fingers made their way under my bra, but you didn't grab me, testing the boundaries, I guess, sliding your thumb along the underside of my breasts. Weren't you on that list, you said? Best ass in the freshman class. You stopped rubbing circles on my stomach. Instead, you rubbed back and forth gently along my waist. Your pinky made its way under the top of my panties and rolled back and forth from hip to hip. Then another finger slipped below, pushing your pinky further down, brushing it through my hair. And that's all you needed, Bryce. You started kissing my shoulder, my neck, sliding your fingers in and out, and then you kept going. You didn't stop there. I'm sorry, is this getting too graphic for some of you? Too bad," end quote. And this one involving a 13-year-old girl. Quote, "His breath smelled like my daddy's corn liquor. He fumbled at the elastic of my panties, but my cutoffs were too tight, and he couldn't work his fingers to where he wanted. Come on now, Kat, let me feel how wet you are. I didn't know what he meant. I pressed my spine into the sofa to get away from him. His fingers slithered under my panties. Oh, yeah, he said, moving his fingers the best he could. See now? By that point, Tommy had unbuttoned my shorts and yanked them down around my thighs, along with my panties. I was gripping them, trying to get them back up, but he was stronger. With Aunt Tidy standing frozen behind him in the doorway, he got one finger up inside me. I whimpered. He kept at it, the heel of his palm driving into my pelvic bone, until he got in two more. Then he moaned. That sick bastard moaned," end quote. The board has rejected our request to remove these books and told us to trust in the appeals process, but that process is obviously not working, since the local media committee, consisting of mostly teachers, administrators, plus a few parents, voted to keep both of these books. Most parents do not want their 11-year-olds to read this material, especially unintentionally. But you have given us no solutions other than to prevent our children from using the libraries at all. We need an objective policy that outlines specific guidelines about what is appropriate and inappropriate for every level, rather than allowing a small committee to make a decision based on their own subjective opinion. You've known about this problem for more than a year now. We're asking you to show some leadership and take action to fix the appeal process, as well as the book selection process, to get rid of all the explicit material in the school libraries. Do what is necessary to protect the children of Forsyth County Schools.
Thank you.
These are some suggestion guidelines.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Anne Christopher.
Hello. I'm reading a passage from Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close. "I know a lot about birds and bees, but I don't know very much about the birds and the bees. Everything I do know had to teach myself on the internet. I had to teach myself on the internet because I don't have anyone to ask. For example, I know that you give someone a blowjob by putting your penis in their mouth. I also know that a dick is a penis, and the cock is a penis too, and monster cock, obviously. I know that VJs get wet when a woman is having sex, although I don't know what they get wet with. I know that VJ is cunt, and I also know ass. I know what dildos are, I think, but I don't know what cum is exactly. I know that anal sex is humping in the anus, but I wish I didn't. Is this part of the state of Georgia standards, or is this a Forsyth County standard thing? Because this is unacceptable. I'm a parent. I'm a taxpayer. I have a child in these schools. This book that I tried to read 10 months ago, but I was like Dr. Seuss and a preschool teacher, and I used rhyming words, so instead of dick, I used rick. But here I am, actually reading the words from this book that is in middle schools and high schools in our county, and you guys have kept it there. I think that's unacceptable. I would never allow my children to read this book. I would hope you wouldn't want your child, your grandchild, or a student of this so-called wonderful school county to read it either. You had a young girl speak about sexual assault, harassment? It starts here, guys. You're just not born with it. What are you guys going to do about it? It is your job as our school board members to make change. I would hope you would be like the one we honor today. His name is on the screen. Marco Ramirez, Employee of the Month. Quote, "You have gone above and beyond to do your best job." I would love to say that about every single individual sitting in front of me. Last time we were here, we got smirks from some of you. It's on video. It's on film. Amazing disappointment, and I really have no more other words, but, trust me, I will be back to read other passages of books that continue to be in our school system libraries for our minor children until you guys do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one. That concludes our public participation for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
So moved. Ms. Morrissey's last one. Second by Ms. Light. All in favor?